Call this meeting to order, February 18th, Board of Select meetings, 7:00 PM. Please join me for Fudge Allegiance.
Fudge Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I don't have any announcements, I don't think. Do I have any here? I don't think we have any announcements, do you have anything?
No, other than early voting, takes place here during normal office hours next week.
Okay.
That's why we have the booths.
So people can just come in between Monday through Thursday and normal business hours?
That's correct.
Which are 9:00 to 1:00 Monday and Thursday, and 9:00 to 3:00 Tuesday and Wednesday.
Okay. Thank you. We have some meeting minutes from February 3rd, did everybody have a chance to review them?
Yes, so I have two things, one is...
Did everybody else have a chance to review?
Yeah, I think I got them.
Okay, go ahead.
So one is the, on the signatures line, item 11 on our agenda, it has January 21st, did we ever approve those? Because I thought we tabled them at the last meeting.
No, that's a typo, it should have been on this list as well, you tabled those till this meeting.
Okay. I don't have a copy of those, I think we're gonna push them.
Push them another.
Because I don't remember what they were. So we'll push those to the next one.
And the second thing was in the February 3rd minutes on the first page, under Selectman Dean asked Selectman Allward, that's paragraph, "I did not call ethics," and I didn't file anything with ethics, I filed it with the town clerk, so that should be rectified, otherwise I have no problems.
Okay. The only other thing is, I think we just need to give Amy a heads up, I think she leaves as a standard that 8:20, we definitely did not re-enter at 8:20. So, hold on. We, I think, on the second page where it says we reconvene to open session, it should say at 9 o'clock, I think we need to make sure that the length of our executive session is noted.
Okay.
And then, when we came back from our last one, so that would be on the, before the signature page, instead of 8:20, it should say 9:30.
Any other items? Okay. Would they like to make a motion with edits? Looking for a second.
So we're gonna edit the, what we just discussed.
Exactly.
Okay, I'll make a second on that.
Okay. One more favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Okay, you have any correspondence? No correspondence? Departments, Police and Fire Department update, is that coming from Chief or Peter?
Chief, will you come up? Yep. Land these out, Chief.
Please.
Was I sitting there?
Yeah, it's okay. I got it.
We have special guests we're getting ready for today.
I know, I see that.
We have our chairs ready.
You want them to go first, it'll be a little bit lengthy.
You're gonna be lengthy?
A little bit.
Okay, Lynn, let's take this out of order if nobody minds.
It's fine by me.
Okay. Thank you for the heads up. Would our special guests like to come up, library trustees and friends? Thank you Chief for giving us the heads up on that.
You can pull some chairs from the first row also. Take the cool spinny chair.
Hello.
Thank you guys for coming tonight.
Thanks for having us. So I know that Lynn and I have a few things to tell you guys about the library, but I wanted to introduce everybody to our new junior friends of the library group.
Okay.
It's recently been started, we have about 10, 15 kids that have been coming to some meetings to help out with the library, I have some representatives here today. They're gonna be doing some really cool things at the library, from advising the librarian on what books they should have in their youth collection, they've taken over the bulletin board on the entryway of the library that anybody who goes to the library can see, and they're gonna be planning some really awesome community events for the library as well. I'm gonna let them tell you a little bit more about it.
Fantastic. So we started this group because I know a lot of kids who are like super interested in helping the library, and they just don't wanna see it shut down, and so we decided to start this group to try and help it. And there, since there are 351 town residents in cities in the state of Massachusetts, only six of them have decertified libraries. Five out of the six have a population of under 700 people. Millville has over 3,000 people, and we should not be on that list.
Thank you for the information. What is your name?
Clover Maloney.
Nice to meet you Clover.
The library has so much more than just books, it's about having fun and education. The library has more than just fiction books too, there are also nonfiction books and science and history books also, they also have lots of movies.
And what is your name?
Ivy Maloney.
Nice to meet you Ivy.
Our events are free and open to the public, you can learn more about them and find out about future events by stopping by into the library. When you are there, you can check out that month's new bulletin board design. If you can't stop in, the library all, also posts its events on its Facebook page.
And I know who you are, but I don't know if everybody else does, what is your name, sir?
Joseph Lafayette.
Good to see you Joseph. I'm very glad you guys came tonight.
You wanna tell them about your March event?
Our next event is a Leprechaun Day scavenger hunt with a showing of Ratatouille. The scavenger hunt will take place on March, Friday, March 13th at 5:00, and the movie will follow at 6:00. We are always looking for more kids who want to get involved. If you know someone who would like to join us, please come to our next meeting, it will be on March 7th at 1:00 at the library. We will be planning our April events at this meeting.
Very good. Thank you kids. Thank you all of you for coming down.
Yes, thank you. Great information.
Well spoken and stepping up and doing stuff, because we're always asking the adults to step up and do stuff for the town, and so it's great to see that the future is sitting before us and that you're already, you're ready to go right now, so that's wonderful. You guys are welcome here anytime, just get on the agenda when you have something to tell the town. Thank you for coming in.
Nice job.
We also have things happening at the library that are not just for kids, so we wanted to take a few minutes to talk about some of those things as well.
It's a tough act to follow.
I know, it is a tough act to follow. But we do have an awful, the library has a lot to offer, we had, from, you know, the programming that we have, we have meeting space that's available, we have a book club, I think their next book club is Saturday.
Yeah.
We have Pinterest craft nights, we have movie nights, they'll be having movie nights for adults as well, as part of a new program that we're able to bring to the library. Library's also received a number of cultural council grants recently, so we'll be bringing even new, exciting programming to the library.
Yeah, yeah, librarian has always got something that she's writing her grant for, and so, yeah, I thought I had it in here, but the next one is, is, she's got a bunch anyway, she really does.
Okay.
Come into the library and find out what they are, so.
Remind me, what are the library hours right now?
So Tuesday and Thursday, 2 till 6, and Saturday, 9 till 3.
Yep. And they have free Wi-Fi, they have a computer and printing available, so if somebody is at home and doesn't have access to those things, they can always come to the library during the library hours to use those services.
Tell them, the, I guess Millville Elementary has a book club?
Yeah, there's a literacy lunch that the, that the elementary school offers to their third, fourth and fifth graders, and as part of that, all of the books that'll be part of the literacy lunch program are available from the library as well, so if there's a family that wants to participate in the program, you don't wanna have to go buy the book every time, you can take them out of the library.
And they assume they have multiple copies of all these books?
I believe so, I would say, you know.
I don't think it's been an issue yet anyway.
Right, right, exactly.
Good.
It's a great service.
Yeah, trying to make it even more.
Yep, yep.
Appreciate that.
We've got so much involvement this year, with our junior friends, our senior friends, I don't think they'd like us.
Kids call them the senior friends.
I was gonna say that, but I caught myself earlier. I'm sorry. New trustee, so everything, everything is going well, and hoping more of the town can get behind us.
Good.
And I had a good portion of meeting with the two Colleen's, Lynn and Jim Malali, just talking about their budget and strategy and so forth, and I did learn a lot, like what that young, beautiful young woman said about one of the few communities that's decertified, I thought that was, that just jumped out at me.
Are we the biggest?
Yeah, the biggest decertified, that's right.
The next biggest one has 680 people.
And those others might have waivers, I think, if you, what you guys were telling me, so we're the only one fully decertified of all the communities in the Commonwealth, that really jumped out at me. So anyway, they've put together a budget, when we get to the budgets, you'll be seeing that, it's a fully certified budget, otherwise I think it's an all or none type of strategy that we'll be talking about, because the funds they've been using to pay the payroll, to open the, pay the staff to have the hours that they do provide, will run out halfway through the fiscal year, so it, really, you can't go forward this way. Time to pony up or do something different.
Pony up.
But I really had a good meeting, it was great, enthusiastic people, and this, this is incredible to see something like this with these children, so it's wonderful.
Thank you for all your efforts, much appreciated.
Nice work.
Thank you.
Give me your support.
Thank you. All right, back in, now I'm back onto police and fire.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
Pass out a small handout, and I'm gonna explain what it's all about. More than 10 years ago, we regionalized dispatch with Town Amendment and Hope Dale. That was in FY10, which was the first year, that contract went through FY12. And if you look, the first FY10, 11, 12, and you look to the right, that's what we actually paid the Town Amendment to be part of the regional dispatch system. So the first year was 12, 5, it went 56,000, 56,000. So that's the first contract we had with Menden, everything's been going well, they've been a great partner, but things are changing, and that's why I really have to explain to the board what's going on. The second contract we signed, we signed, if you notice, it was a five-year contract, we paid $30,000, $30,000, $30,000, then the fourth and fifth year respectfully, it went up to 40 and 40.
Was the first year in FY10, was that a partial year?
They go from November to June, so they break it up that way, but it was a full year.
It was, oh, okay.
Yeah, it was. So, first year was three years, first contract, the second contract was five.
Okay.
Now let's talk about the third contract, which started in FY18, that's the one that became very convoluted, very challenging. Under the former Town Administrator, she was able to broker a new contract with Menden and 911, given our financial difficulties. And if you look at the five-year contract, in FY18, we paid zero, then we paid zero, FY20 was 10, 21 is 10, and 22 is going to be 10 as well. Realistically, if you look to the right-hand side, that's what we should have been paying. It goes up exponentially, but we should have been paying $50,000 at the end of this contract.
Right.
Okay, so I want everyone to fully understand that. Let's step forward to today. Menden is in the process of building a new police station. They have been approached by E911, who funds the dispatch center in part, for Menden and Millville to join a new dispatch center called Metacomet, which consists of Franklin, Norfolk, Plainville and Retham. They're proposing to take dispatch over for us, and the five, the new five-year contract they are proposing would be zero for the first year, zero for the second year, zero for the third year, then FY25 and 26 would go to 50,000, but they would discount it 50% in FY25, and then 25% in FY26, so respectively, we paid 25 and $37,000 at the end of that five-year contract. Then they are proposing a cap of no more than $50,000 for any current year.
So is that 50,000, that 50% of 50,000, is that 50% or is that the discount?
It would be...
25.
25,000 raised.
Okay, so...
As it says, it's 50% of...
Okay, just wanna make sure.
So it'll be 25,000, and then it would be the difference in that final year.
Okay.
And then they're proposing a cap of $50,000 for the next five years.
Five years out from there.
Five years out from there.
So it's really a 10, 10-year contract.
Correct.
Thank you.
Correct. So, when you, when you go down the line, and you look at the numbers from FY10 till the end of this contract, how much money we would have spent, we should have spent, and the numbers are staggering. Since FY10 till the end of this current contract and the end of the new contract, we would have spent almost 3 million, over $3 million on dispatching, in that time of these four contracts. However, realistically, you can see what we've spent, we've only spent $386,000. That's, that's an amazing savings.
Absolutely.
So, we have a couple of choices we can, we can speak about, and I spoke to Chief Chris in Menden, and they're on board with going to this new regional dispatch center, and we really don't have a choice but to follow them. If we choose not to follow them, we'd have to find somebody new to do our dispatching duties. Along with that, 911 would have to approve it, and the town that we would try to go to, they would have to vote to approve it. Based on these numbers, we would never find anyone who would be willing to do our dispatching services for this type of money. This is a savings for the next 10 years out. Along with the contract, Metacomet, they're located in Norfolk, they're gonna install no-cost to Millville radio tower, 140 feet tall, to replace the current tower that we have.
Okay.
That way we'll have line of sight for radio transmission, we won't have any voids within the tower. Any new radios, any equipment that's needed, they will pick up the tab through a grant that they write for 911.
Okay.
So at the end of the day, we save a significant amount of money, we have no exposure to any debt or to any repairs or any equipment we may need, and it's kind of a win situation. I did take a ride to Norfolk, and I took a look at their operations center, it's absolutely incredible. It cost $7 million to build, it's state of the art. They're gonna also try to expand into Bellingham, and grab Bellingham, then maybe another community between Bellingham and Millville. That's not for us to decide. So at the end of the day, we're gonna have better service, better equipment, for less money. So that's what they're gonna propose to Town of Millville, especially Peter, I spoke with Peter about what's been going on, they haven't been negotiating at all for the town, but that's gonna be their best offer.
Okay.
So, I guess we could say no, but then what do we do?
Right.
In my opinion, we'd be absolutely, it would be absolutely foolish to, to not go with this particular type of deal, because for 10 years, our cost is $52,000. So like I said, it's kind of a win situation for the town, but the money that we save is amazing considering what we started in FY10. So if I would have said we were gonna save 2.5 million dollars over 12 years, I never thought we could have done that, but we did.
Right.
And props to the, the former Town Administrator for that FY22 to, I'm sorry, the FY18 to the FY22 contract, she saved the town, if you looked at the column to the right, should have been 40, 40, 40, 50, 50, so that's 203, $230,000, and we only paid 30.
Okay.
So, and this is gonna happen relatively fast, so I would think by January, we'd be willing to sign on a dotted line, so we do have a payment coming up, we just made one for November, we're gonna make probably another one in June, and then hopefully, we'll be on board with the new dispatch center.
Okay, do they have the option to say no to us in any way?
No.
Okay.
Their goal, E911, is to regionalize as many cities and towns in Massachusetts as they can. Go back a few years, there were 352 PSAPs, that means there was a 911 computer system in every single police station, they've cut that number down, and they're still trying to go lower and lower.
Right.
So this particular group is four now, we would be six, if they add another community or two, they'll be up to seven or eight.
Okay.
And that's their goal.
Right.
And if you look towards Braintree and other departments, they're all doing this. Millville, for a different reason, we got a better deal, because call volume's lower, and we don't have as much money as Retham, so all that's considered, so that's, that's where we are today.
Good.
So, they're gonna be looking to speak to the town, the Board of Selectmen, and to the Town Administrator soon.
When you say they, do you mean E911?
911, that'll be out of my job description to really finalize the payment.
Okay.
But, if you're looking to save more than what they're offering, that's not gonna happen, from my, my opinion. There, I kind of didn't negotiate, I kind of beat them down to that dollar mark.
Okay.
So we're, we're really at 50,000 13 years later, where we should have been.
Right.
So if that makes sense.
That's good.
So it's, it's a crazy, crazy amount of money we're gonna save.
Good.
So Chief, you're looking for no sense of objection here from the board, correct?
Exactly right, exactly right. Chief Chris presented his opinion to the Board of Selectmen last week, I presented mine tonight, it's just a blessing to go forward, because if we don't go forward, and they do, we're gonna be in trouble, anyway.
And this tower that comes, can serve as a wireless tower as well.
The good part, once they construct it, we own it.
We can rent it out.
We, shh, I didn't say that, but once...
Neither did she.
Right. Once they do construct it, it becomes our tower.
Right.
It's gonna be state of the art, 140 feet.
Yep.
Where will this tower be located? Do we know yet?
Right behind the school, where the current one is.
Okay.
Right now, we simply have a telephone pole with a pole on top of that, this is gonna be a modern, this is gonna be a modern structure, so it'll be quite valuable to the town.
All right, good, good work.
So that's where we stand with dispatch.
I think this really goes to show, you know, this is really a 30-year paper in front of us.
It is.
And I think, you know, when the Selectmen back in 2010 for regionalizing, seeing that need and the, the cost of our dispatch being in-house going up, in 2013, that contract went down, that was part of, because we opened negotiation with neighboring towns, and so we, we stayed active with that. Mrs. Callahan worked wonders with E911 to save us a lot of money when we were in a pinch. And now with this Metacomet, it seems like this is a department that's really showing exactly what we wanted to happen in town and, and cost savings, and it's a continued effort, and it never sits stagnant, so I thank you for staying on top and negotiating that for us.
If you think about it, dispatch, the budget for dispatch in 2000, actually 2009, 2010 was around 240,000, and we're, it's still at, we're gonna be at 50, zero for three more years, then 50,000.
Fantastic.
Unheard of, that's a windfall to this town over the time period of over 2.5 million dollars.
Yep.
And these numbers are straight, I got their contracts, I did bring them with us, with me, the three contracts over the years, if anyone wants to look at them. So these are real numbers and real dollars.
The only questions I had you answered was about the infrastructure, and then the only other one would be the contract. I know we had some kind of safeguards with, with Menden for your, so I know that's gonna probably change as far as how do we deal with issues and problems, and we'll wanna make sure that our residents and our departments...
They, from what I understand, is the governance of the regional dispatch center, it's, the police departments do not run it.
Right.
It's the Town Administrators who are part of this governance.
Okay.
And with the police chiefs, so everything's by vote, it's equal representation, so I think we're fine.
Okay.
I think we're really good.
All right.
So that's, that's, and the announcement, a precursor to what's gonna happen, I guess, down the road, preemptive notification, if you will.
Seems like this is our best option.
Yeah, we're just saving more money, that's what it comes down to, we're saving more money.
Good service.
Yeah, and that's why I wrote this really quick, if you take a look at it, the four contracts, and how we're actually going back to FY10 numbers.
Mm-hmm.
That's incredible. So, if you have any questions about that, you know, let me know, I'll keep the board and Peter informed of what's going on, it's moving quickly.
Along with your work, Chief, I think the other key component is the interest of 911 that, that they have in our town.
Right.
They, they want us to succeed too, so.
They do. Every PSAP, back in the day, was about $400,000 for each PSAP, so every time they eliminate one, they, because every, they have to be replaced every few years, so now when they keep eliminating them, it's, it's good for them too.
Right, that's why they're interested.
And you pay for it, every cell phone, every telephone, you pay the fee, it's E911, so that's where they get their funding from, and so, and that's it for that.
So Chief, when you, when you spoke to them providing necessary equipment other than the tower, would that include vehicle radios as well as handheld stuff, or what do you...
Any radio that we need, that we don't currently have a radio that's compatible with their new system would be replaced.
So what is the likelihood of that actually happening?
Oh, really good.
So that's an added benefit, because I know how expensive that stuff is.
It really is. And I've spoken about it before, a lot of our radios are old, old technology, so we're gonna need to replace them anyway, so they, they'll replace what we need.
You got a lot of old cars too, that's why you have old radios.
I'm not saying old.
Just pointing it out.
Learned my lesson about speaking a little bit, so I'm kinda trying not to comment. So, that's it for that, so I'll pass along more information as I get it.
Good.
But we're gonna save a lot of money.
Good.
That's good.
Much appreciated.
And I, like I said, I didn't mean to overstep my bounds and negotiate, but I really had to tell them we had the money, and, yeah.
You told them we had the money?
No money.
Oh, I was like, what?
Have no money.
I said, I said, we have no money, we really can't, we can't do much, so it worked out pretty well.
That's not a secret, yeah.
No, okay. So that's dispatch. Very quickly, if you notice in front of the police station, our new digital sign is working, so if anyone wants to place a message on, it's town-related, just give us a call and we'll place that.
Okay.
On the fire side, we got a grant for a washing machine, which is kind of unique, because we've never had one to wash the turnout gear.
Okay.
So now we wash the turnout gear, removing the toxins that we never did before. We had a town resident donate the dryer to match it, so that's pretty good inside the fire department.
Good.
The generator for the police department was delivered last week, I'd like to thank the highway department, the concrete pad for the generator, the vendor wanted $1,200 for it, so highway and I, we got together, we did it ourselves for like $60.
Nice.
So it's done, and the generator's on it, and it should be ready to go in a week or two.
Good.
So, and that's it, and the only other thing, the only update on the seniors, the generator for seniors, the feds did accept the final grant, which was quite involved, we'd never really wrote a grant like that before, and I think that's a win, so I think we should have good notification within the next couple of weeks or months, yeah.
Good.
That's it.
Was that a full grant for the...
It was, it was. There's a match of, I think, 20%, but we can use in-kind service.
Yeah.
So if we, if we install the pad, which we will do, that will eliminate the match.
The senior center needed a pad as well? Oh, okay.
Yeah.
But one did and one didn't?
No, they need the pad, it sits on concrete.
Yeah.
So that should be, should be nice when we have that in place.
Mm-hmm.
That's about it.
Well, I saw you the end of the day that you were, when you said we did with the highway, put the pad in, you were stirring concrete, shoveling concrete into forms and...
Well, we just don't have the money, we find ways... Well, we just don't have the money. We find ways to do it, and we did it for, I think, sixty-four dollars with the final cost, so-
Best part was, they didn't ask me to come help. I like that.
Did you know, Peter, you did you bring with coffee or anything?
They had a lot of experience from the playground. Lot of experience from the playground.
Well, Brian Malali helped, so, and his man actually did a lot of labor. I did a lot of supervising. He did most of the labor.
Whatever works.
Makes you an administrator.
So, that's it, so I'll let you know in the future what happens and-
Perfect.
Good job.
Yeah.
Come out to you immediately.
Thank you.
Good, Chief. Well done.
Public forum? Anybody wanna come up?
Pam does.
Pam? Did you wanna come up, or is Jen forcing you?
No, she asked me.
Come on up.
Here I go. Hi, everyone.
Hello.
I'm Pam Dinklansh, chairman of the COA Millville, so. And, um, I just had a couple of questions. Um, instead of like trying to contact each one of you individually or that type of thing, I just thought it'd be best if I just went and ask you. Like, when are we going to meet for our budgeting? I don't know if we're gonna meet with you first, or if we're gonna go in front of the, uh, income first.
You put a plan together yet?
So we don't have a plan, but my plan is for the next meeting to present to you the budget, which will incorporate everybody else's side, so. And then that will go off to the finance committee, where you might likely get in front of them as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. I just wanna make sure that the availability is, that we're available for.
Okay.
You know, we're just wondering when it's gonna come up.
Okay.
And, um, 'cause we're-
And you may decide you wanna have workshops, or however you've historically done it with different departments and so forth.
We haven't put anything on the calendar yet, but when we do-
That'd be great, 'cause we're ready.
Okay. We like that.
Just, uh, the staffs, come on in here. Um, let's see if there's anything else. With a heavy heart, I did wanna let the board know that Jill Anderson, our coordinator for the, um, Council of Aging is retiring, um, the end of April.
Okay.
And she handed in her paper, uh, retirement papers today.
Okay.
So you'll be hearing about that. I was going to notify you individually again by telling you all, but I think instead of writing, I'll just come for us and tell you.
There you go.
And, uh, we're going to need a replacement, like pronto. And she is going, she has listed, and has given to Peter a list of her job description, her job duties, and they are quite extensive, and most of which is on there. She is the only person that can do. So, we do need a replacement immediately, if not sooner, just so that it's publicly out there that we will be looking for a new, um, coordinator for our senior center, because of all the functions she does. She's the only paid position there, a very small paid position.
Did she, um, retire already? Was it effective immediately, or?
She's retiring the end of April.
Oh, the end of April.
End of April.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's a definite. And I think we'll be able to keep her on maybe a little bit extra here and there, just for a consultation.
Okay.
And, um, we're gonna really need her, 'cause there's a lot, and everything's happening so fast with us. 'Cause we're now, we're, we're now open three days a week, opposed to that of two days a week, and that is going over very well. And it's something to be very proud of. So seniors are very active now, three days a week at the center. There's a lot going on, and, um, that's why I wanted to ask about the budget, make sure we got it in, uh, for a few little changes.
Okay.
Not major.
Yeah, we haven't, like I said, we haven't set the schedule on that yet. We haven't put-
I just wanted to inform you about Jill leaving us.
Yeah.
Um, not that she hasn't already, but she is just the next day.
Our thanks, 'cause I know there was a time period when she was not getting paid and was helping, and her commitment and dedication to our town is noted.
Well, it's, um, every day I learn something new from her. Incredible. She's a remarkable woman. And, you know, um, sitting down, talking to her, and seeing how, see how intelligent of a woman that she is. Do you know that she graduated from college with Mrs. Clinton, President Clinton's wife? I mean, that's just to show you how brilliant of a woman she is. Not that makes any difference, 'cause it doesn't. But she's just a remarkable, you'd never know it. You wouldn't even know whether she had a high school diploma or not, because she won't say anything. She's just absolutely brilliant and so kind, and she, she works all weekend, I know. On her own time. Every Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, her day's off. She's working. And she's working a lot of hours for the senior center, and mostly for the VN. And that's, uh, that's the scariest thing, is about the, um, the VN.
Yeah.
You know, for our disabled and elderly, getting the doctors' appointments and everything. That's our big, 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 big concern.
Right, right.
Yeah. Just heads up.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Pam.
Anyone else?
I can, one thing I was gonna ask.
All right.
Jerry, forty-seven Grove. I was just curious if there's been any other, uh, update concerning the regional agreement?
That's coming up later, yeah. That's coming up later.
Coming up later with that?
Yep.
I'll hold off then.
All righty. And if you have questions after that, they're more than welcome.
Indeed, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
So, new business?
Sorry, yes.
Yep, okay, come on up.
I'm sorry, just one other thing that we forgot to mention. Um, we're always looking-
I gotta say your name and your address, ma'am.
Oh, sorry. Lynn Foley, twenty-eight Maureen Way. We're always looking at the library for people with skills to share, people in town, anybody that has any kind of skills to share with different age groups at the library. And right now, we're especially looking for that tween age. So if anybody knows anybody that can share something, that'd be great.
I'm really good at yelling at them to clean their room.
No, thank you.
So you're looking for people to work with tweens, or you need a tween to work?
Either one.
I don't know what you're asking for.
I know, I know. So we're looking maybe to set a program for that, that age group. And that's usually the hardest age group to get involved into anything, so, um, you know, we've got some good little kid programs. We've got that kind of, uh, Pam's daughters in, in that age group with the, with the new friends group, but that, just a little bit older, we need some help with. So if anybody out there in town knows of anybody who, you know, can run something, or just suggestions even for us, so, all right. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Onto new business. I thought I heard somebody else. Approval of collective bargain agreement between Town of Millville and Teamsters Local One Seventy, the firefighters' union?
If available. No, so right now, it's with council, just for a quick review. Everything in it is good. I'd hope to have it for you to sign, so next meeting, that's right. But it's all good from what I see.
Okay. All right, we're looking for, uh, an appointment of David Maloney, the Green Energy Committee?
Yeah, it's technically, it's the Green Community Committee.
Okay.
And through six-thirty-twenty, at least for the initial stage.
Okay.
Okay. He's volunteered to step up, help with Trish Benoit Rudden, who's effectively the only other member, but the chief's been very active with it, and he's roped me in to help be active with it. And, uh, we're pursuing a grant, a fairly significant grant, uh, that will need to get in, so we got our work cut out for us. I appreciate the effort of the chief and the, you know, Trish, that they've been putting in on this. Uh, I've been the slacker, but it's, it'll be great to get, uh, somebody like David, who's willing to step up. It's a pretty interesting committee to figure out what to do with, uh, grant monies and how best to spend it and utilize. And, uh, we welcome other members on this committee, so I'll look forward to that, but I'm thrilled that he's, uh-
So this is for six-thirty-twenty?
Yes.
All right. Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint David Maloney to the Green Committee, Green Community Committee through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty.
Anybody second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, David.
Yes, I know they, they need it. The committee of one is now the committee of-
Two plus helpers.
Two and a half.
I don't know if we're negative or positive on that.
All right. Next item is a request to hold a second annual relay. Is this a relay race through Blackstone into Millville? I think that's what it is.
Rhode Island, Mass. and Connecticut.
That's on August twenty-ninth, it's a Saturday. Anybody have any questions on this?
We've done that in the past, Chief. Do you have any information on this?
It's a yearly event. It goes well. We've never had a problem.
Thank you.
So you've looked at the path, and you're good with that?
Yep.
All right. I'm assuming we have to vote on this one, or do we vote on this one, or?
Yeah, we, we have a form to fill out.
There's a signature on the back.
That we stand by.
There's a signature on the back.
So if you can approve from my signature on it, that's probably the best way.
Anybody like to make a motion to allow Peter to sign?
Make a motion to allow, uh, the executive, um, town administrator to sign the Rhode Island, Mass. Connecticut relay for Saturday, August twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. All right. Have any old business to discuss? I don't have anything. Does anybody else have? Old?
No, thank you.
All right, onto selectman reports. REC update, Andrew?
Uh, okay, so at the last meeting, we didn't take any changes. I believe we finalized, um, the agreement in what it was written at, so we didn't change any of the language. Some of the major issues that were, uh, spoken of was that the Blackstone Finance Committee had, before our meeting, met and is entertaining the idea of, uh, breaking up the, um, regional, uh, school. They are going to be doing a, um, kind of an analysis to see how verifiable it is and if it's worth them doing or not.
I think they were just putting a warrant out, they were trying to put a warrant onto their town meeting to do a study to see if it was feasible to, if it made any sense to split the towns up.
Okay. Thank you, Pam.
I think whether it's feasible or not, Department of Education will have something to say about that.
Exactly.
Yeah, they would have to approve it in the end.
And it's the finance committee, not the Board of Selectmen?
Yeah, the Blackstone-
It's the finance committee member who was a, who was a school committee member, who also did a analysis a few years back to see if it was feasible, and nothing ever came from that. That was, um, when I think Mr. Chaplin was there, so they did a presentation, nothing came of that either, so.
So, if I may, what are they, are you saying to end the regional agreement?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
That's what one-
They just wanna, they wanna do a study to see how much it would cost to end it, and if it made financial sense to split the towns up. I don't think that would come through in any positive way, but it's one person-
If, if it, if the, uh, study came back that they would save money, and let's say that they decided to do this, to break up the school, they would have to pass it at their town meeting, and then we would have to pass it as well to break up the school. So, it's not very- And Desi would have to move it as well.
That's not necessarily true.
No, that's what we were told.
Because the con, it's in the, it's in the regional agreement, which stands now, there's a window that you can do it in. I can't remember. I think it's every five years.
Yeah, you're right.
But you have to give a six-month, you have to give like a June, there is a six-month time before like the first of the year that you have to give that you wanna leave, and there is a whole process in the current, uh, the current agreement that we have.
Right.
There is a way for it to get out.
Is there anything in the-
But I think they're just trying to make sure it makes sense if they do that.
The new agreement that's being written now, is there any language in there that refers to this?
It's the same language, yeah.
We looked at it a number of times. I believe it still has to go to vote for both towns.
Both towns, yeah, that's, it's been-
But the language is the same.
Yeah.
Yes. And that's, and what we were told from our advisor, the advisors on the committee, that both towns would have to agree to.
No, that I understand, but the language for the time window you're talking about and the time span, it's hiatus in between that actual action. A time window that's in there.
We've never had any time window, that's why I'm not-
Yeah, so what I, what I understand from my counterpart over there in Blackstone was the finance committee did vote to put a warrant article forward for their county meeting to explore, uh, to do a feasibility study to explore deregionalizing, and that his sense was the likelihood of support amongst their Board of Selectmen would be limited to the elementary schools deregionalizing. But again, you have contractual language that stipulates how the process would take place.
This is still in draft form, so it can change.
Yeah.
In the regional agreement that isn't quite signed yet, and the new one that's drafted, but still carries forward that language.
The last year was, uh, two thousand two, and every five years, so seven, twelve.
Seventeen, twenty-three, twenty-two. So they're getting their ducks in a row, basically, for twenty-two.
And, uh, the chair of the regional school committee has to be on the next agenda to talk about where they're at, and I think present their latest draft-
Yep.
For the Board of Selectmen's review questions and potentially approval. So hopefully, we'll have documentation in advance for you to prepare, review, and prepare before that meeting.
Okay.
'Cause it's complex stuff that you're weighing in on.
Absolutely.
And like I say, in the last meeting, I did meet with the chair of the regional agreement, as well as the superintendent, assistant superintendent, who addressed my eighteen points on that quite well, so I was fairly satisfied. But I haven't looked at the results of that being reflected in the documentation.
Is that pre or post your comments that you have now?
That's before my comments. That's correct.
Okay, so you haven't seen, okay.
Yep.
Section twelve, at the five-year.
Yep.
So the five-year would be twenty-twenty-two. There's a hiatus in there of a period of time if they were to go and execute this, that you still have to look at. Is that the way it works, Andrew?
Sorry, what?
I said, if it's a five-year hiatus, I mean, a five-year look forward, okay? So it's twenty-twenty-two would be the five-year for the last time we've done. Question I've got is, with that five years, is there a period of time that is a period before they can execute that, they would need a period of time to be able to be six months or whatever it is in the contract they could work forward on? So you need a period of time before twenty-twenty-two.
Yep.
So six months into twenty-twenty-one, you should be looking to execute for twenty-twenty-two.
To re-up the agreement, or you-
That's to re, to re-up the agreement the way it is for the five years.
Uh, as far as I know, yes.
It does spell out how long, twelve-month and six-month. You have to give us a twelve-month notice, and then a vote has to be handed.
Twelve-month notice.
I believe that's what, yeah.
That's what I thought. I thought there was a notice period in there.
There is a notice period, so they have to-
Otherwise, there's no note that you just can't do it.
Right.
There has to be a notice. That's what I'm asking you with the timeframe, so.
I, I don't remember what the thing is, yeah.
Section twelve with the current one, yes. No, there is.
Twenty-twenty-two's coming around pretty quick, isn't it?
Sure is.
Yes, 'cause the last time we looked at it, there was some scuttlebutt in Millville to start looking at, to see, and there was a timeframe in which that needed to occur. I believe it's twelve months, and then, within that twelve months, the vote of its communities can occur with a six-month notice from the end.
So there's a-
I think that's how I just read it.
Yeah, there's a period in there that that takes place.
Yes.
I don't want it for long, I just wanna make sure that I understood it correctly, 'cause that twenty-twenty-two's coming around the corner.
Yeah, and we don't have access to that document anywhere.
To which the existing?
Whatever one is existing.
Well, there are multiples.
Right, that's what I'm saying. We used to have it on our town website, but we don't anymore.
Because there were too many different versions.
Multiple versions.
Multiple versions.
So which version do we have?
The version that we have-
We have Millville's.
Is not the version that Desi has, so they, I don't even know if they know which one to go on.
So this is going to really be the master.
That's why this is, they have a different version.
And which one is the rule? I mean, would Desi be the one that would be the rule, 'cause that's what they have?
Probably, yeah. I would say that's probably what they go by.
Could we get a hold of Desi one to take a look at? Evangel, you do that one to take a look at?
I think it could just be a matter of-
That's the one that's the rule. Would you look after me?
Absolutely.
Right? Andrew, you agree?
Yeah.
Okay, good idea.
I don't know what the REC did, but I know if you went through your town meetings, any bylaw changes documented and sent off, and the last major change, uh, the last two changes in our regional agreement was the recall of, recall of members, because Blackstone and Millville both have a recall of elected officials.
Yep.
And then the, um, Hartnett Middle School, which I believe is in there, 'cause we had to change the placement of our sixth graders, and that was roughly ninety-two.
They used the version that was on file with the school committee, so it had all of that in there.
Yeah.
But the, the recall language is in there with the-
Those were the two major changes in the past twenty, thirty years.
So Desi would be the one that'd be the rule?
Or did they, you said they went by the school committee one?
Whatever one they had that, that they thought was the most current- Whatever one they had that, that they thought was the most current one.
Closest, yeah.
When they dug in and realized that the one on file with Desi was from the eighties or something.
Okay. All right. All right, so we have Blackstone FinCom. Anything else from the RAC meetings?
No, we're just waiting for Desi to approve the current draft of our agreement. And then we'll be presenting to boards.
Did we send us off to council? Our
We haven't sent a draft to council, no, so.
We were, I thought we were doing that before Desi got the copy, or?
I don't know that we specified when we were getting we were gonna send to council sort of their final
Right, right, because there were so many changes going on, it was
That's right. So, I think this next version we're presented would be the one to send to council. Because it sounds like you're done
Yeah.
wordsmithing the contract, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, my understanding is that they're gonna be bringing this forth to the annual town meeting in the spring. And if it's approved by both communities, it would go in effect of September of 2021?
So far, yeah. I mean, there was a little bit of discussion as to when to present the agreement, to bring it up either in the annual town meetings or have a special town meeting. I don't believe we had figured out. I think it was for the regular, right?
Yeah, I think we were looking to get it approved at town meeting.
Pam, do you want to come up?
Sure.
All right.
They were looking to get it approved at town meeting. And then I think it goes into effect for the next
School year.
But it does stipulate other things that wouldn't go into effect till other times.
So going annual town meeting in May and then starting July 1st of the same year would be in effect with the exception of some items?
No, it would be into, and it would be into effect.
Okay.
Then.
So if it's passed, they would look at regionalizing in the fall? A full regional, if it
No, 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 that, so that's
That's the 2021.
This document allows them to think about doing that. So if this passes and they decide they're gonna do the investigation to see if full, the full regionalizing of everything happens, then it couldn't take place until 20, September of 2021. That's only if everything happens in time.
All right, so we're shifting gears because the original RAC was to regionalize from pre-K to 12. So now is it just cleaning up the language and then going after the regionalization later?
The, this document is mostly getting cleaned up for the most part. It's cleaning up the language that specifies in it where the kids have to go to school. That's part of it.
That's part of the whole regional.
But that doesn't say that that's, that we're definitely, like, that anything's definitely happening.
This, what we're, the committee's job was, was to fix the agreement, to make it unified, to, so everybody had the same copy, same wording, and to then give us the option to either fully regionalize or whatever. But this is pretty, pretty much just taking what we had, making it unified and making it a document that we could then do other things with, but
So it's not going to discuss
The current agreement doesn't even allow them to think about doing that, this full regionalization. So this document, updating it, putting some updated language in it, changing a few things around will allow them to then look into whether or not that makes sense.
Because that's, that's a big piece.
Yes.
So if this is just cleaning up the language and getting one document, that's, that's one thing. But if we're actually putting in language that says you have the opportunity to switch the kids around, it's, it's, it's a full regionalization plan, which they might be delaying to implement. But if it's in the wording, they can do it at will.
It could do it. Well, they can't do it at will. The wording in the language says that if anything was to happen, it would take, I think it needs to be in place or approved by January and then it's by the September of the next year. So nothing could possibly happen fast.
But that language is currently in there.
The language to allow them to do, to think about doing that is in the new draft that we're, that we're looking at, yes. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Yeah, it sounds like they're putting it in the, think about doing it.
Yeah, because otherwise they can't do a study on seeing how
They can't even do the study right now. It would make no sense. Say they did the study and it said, oh, you're gonna save all this money, this is the smartest thing to do for the kids. Well, the agreement we have currently doesn't let us do it. So we can't, it's not, doesn't make any sense to go through all of those motions and then not be able to do it and have to start over again.
I guess it will come down to seeing the language that's being presented.
Exactly.
Take a full understanding of what, where my next questions lead to.
I think all of that would be at the next meeting was a big presentation to kind of show everybody everything and really kind of look at those sections that really are changing.
And then if I may, and then after those changes, those sections are disclosed, then you would go to the attorney to have him take a look at it. To take a review. So that'd be, I'm just trying to figure the process here. So the next meeting really shouldn't be a, the AMA meeting. It's really a, thank you for the presentation, now we go to the lawyer and have him take a look at, make sure everything is
The best interest of Millville.
Uh-huh. Yeah, that sounds fair, because you're really not approving. It's the voters that will have to approve at the town meeting.
Right, it has to go to town meeting, so, yeah.
But they're, they're looking for your support, which you, when you do the warrant article is when you
Right.
Which we have been giving edits.
But yeah, it's very complex.
Oh, yeah.
Take, so there is new language, for example. If you were to deregionalize, it addresses, you gotta take your burden of the OPEX and so forth. You know what I mean? That's, that's a
Those are pretty owners.
Those are hugely owners. It's thirty million now.
Especially a small town that
Thirty million bucks.
Thirty million bucks on our part of that would, what, twenty percent of it?
Mm-hmm.
That's a fair piece of money.
And there's no money on the district side saved for the OPEX.
So that's a stumbling block.
Amongst other things.
But even if I recall, and it's been a while, I, I try not to look at this except when I really gotta look at it. But if I recall, just to clarify, so if they wanted to move kids around, under, under this agreement, they have the right, but they have to come forward to board's approval and so forth.
Before January 1st, I think I remember. It was January 1st for the following year.
Excuse me.
But still, there's a, a level of review and approval by the towns.
Right. In the last draft, I had seen. So I don't know if anything's changed around that.
Right.
Yeah, I think the language around that piece of it hasn't really changed much minus whatever Desi said, my, some words here or there.
Okay.
Your draft is probably correct on that.
Okay, good. All right.
Thank you, Pam.
You're welcome. Anything else on that? All right, next item, annual report draft. I emailed this to everyone last week, just to give you the option to read it ahead of time. It's our annual town report that will go in the back of the book. Anybody have any edits they wish?
Yeah, I think you, you touched on all the salient points in the, for the year. It was well-written, not too long, so.
Did I get everybody
I appreciate it.
Did I get this right? Andrew, you're secretary, right, and member, member? Okay. Any other edits, anybody?
I gave you some feedback earlier, so I'm good.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So I forgot all about Peter Carusa.
Yeah, I wish I didn't have that paragraph.
It's gonna be hard to explain the town administrator report if we don't have a
Right, right.
A higher in there.
So we'll pass this off. Chrissy has a copy of this, I believe, already, but does any edits, anybody thinks of them the next day or two? Feel free to send them along, we can Town Administrator Report?
Sure, I have a few things. I mentioned I met with the school leadership regarding the regional agreement. That was bef, at the last meeting, I mentioned that. But this past couple of weeks, I did Dr. DeFalco and Assistant Superintendent Matt Aaronworth came over and visited me here. People were like, who are those guys? But they came and talked, I'd had some preliminary budget questions, so we came, we had sort of a theoretical discussion, philosophical discussion and some specific points. But I was very happy that they came by and we have good lines of communication as we go forward, so thrilled about that. Also, got the chance to meet with this ad hoc committee regarding, you know, facilities and so forth. So I got to meet with Jerry and Rich Cribello and we, we did a little tour of the Old Town Hall field trip and then came back here and brainstormed for quite a bit. And, you know, I'm enthused about their enthusiasm and Rich is the point person on this because he has the expertise and will talk some of the bigger pieces of the puzzle.
Good guys to have on that committee.
Absolutely, and, you know, that will help me be smarter. Yeah, he's good. And Jerry's terrific, too.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Don't let him tell you otherwise. I separately met with the folks that are doing the rebuild of that place on Prospect slash Hope Street.
Okay.
Just to see what they're, where they're headed and whether there's poss, we have open lines of communication there for the potential for the town, should we wanna explore tenancy there for, you know, trucks and I don't know what else from highway and so forth. So we'll see where that goes. And I had a surprise visit and spent a good hour with the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen of Blackstone. Dan Keefe came by and so I would say we have a nice relationship and again, keep those lines of communication open as better than not. So I was very happy to entertain him. It turns out he watches some of our meetings, so a shout out to Dan. On the accounting side, Free Cash has been submitted and is being reviewed with some edits by the DLS folks. The June 30th, 19, closing is finally, finally closed with some edits, again, by the Department of Revenue folks. Schedule A will likely go in maybe tomorrow. It was, we hoped it would go in today, but we, we need to reflect some of those, we, Derek needs to reflect some of those.
Okay.
And then audit scheduling will begin and information will be provided. And separately, I have a special internal audit project going with some outside assistance and just letting you know about that. Under that earmark
Right.
funds, I'm using those for that. Budget compilations will be in, and, you know, the budget submissions will, if they're not in yet, they, they got about two more days to get them in and then I pick the numbers. Just for anybody that's interested. And we'll be compiling, reviewing, and then they'll be on the next agenda for where the town administrator under the bylaws presents the Board of Selectmen the budget that I will have vetted and recommend. I might have some differences from what folks are asking for, but you'll know that and that'll be fully disclosed. And then we can provide that to the Finance Committee.
So you think you'll have those to us next meeting?
Next meeting, that's my goal, yep.
Okay.
Okay. And I've already looked at the number of the budgets and I already know sort of my
Right.
talking points. I will also at the next meeting be bringing forth amendments to the MES corrective, water corrective action plan.
Okay.
As required by Mass DEP. They come after me, I, I guess I missed a deadline, but they want some corrective action plans, which are amendments to what we've previously, previously you all approved and so on. So I'll have something drafted up for you at the next meeting, looking for your approval. The amendments will be, we're doing what we said we were gonna do. We're not really changing the game plan. And if anything, we don't think that tapping into an external water supply is in the immediate future of the town, nor in the immediate best interest of the town. So, that's just a heads up there. Staff changes, you heard about Jill retiring and, yes, Jill does a lot with, for, for little and with little. So finding a replacement for her will be an interesting challenge. Also, Sarah, the town planner, is officially, officially, you know, leaving other than a little bit
Are you sure? We can't keep her a little bit longer.
I spoke to her yesterday, trying to talk Turkey a little bit. So she, I still have her available for marijuana things, which is interesting and sort of outside the scope of responsibility for planning. They have, the planning folks have got three people lined up for interviews next week. I'll sit in on those. And we may broaden the scope actually of, you know, this part-time planner into something a little broader because Chrissy is, has given us notice and she's leaving the end of this month. And Chrissy wears many hats here in support of the building commissioner, highway and assessors. So what that challenge creates is also opportunity for moving players around the board a little bit. So we'll see where that goes. And so it's exciting and a little scary. DePrater Street, just you, you all sign everything you need to sign. Money's in escrow with the attorneys, just waiting for the other party to get their notarized signature documents to the lawyers and then we'll be done, done, done. And that's all I have.
That's it?
Yeah.
Is the school district still looking for a level service budget with a five and a half percent increase?
So, in the, in the discussions where, from which they were gonna then be doing some more sharpening of pencils, I'll just say two things in our discussions that jumped out at me. Yes, they have a level service, but they might be looking for their higher level, which is doing bigger and better things. So I'm not sure where we're, where we're going, but right now, both of those are outside of the guidance that I'd be looking for, which is a 3% increase, okay? That said, if you, if you look at just out of district special education alone, the budget this year versus what they're budgeting for next year, that basically sucks up the whole 3%. It's a $330,000 increase of just those categories. And that's a, you know, our 28% of that is about what we have, we can afford. Separately, I fully understand that the Superintendent was talking about, they want to have a literacy program that goes basically K through 12. And that's an expensive curriculum purchase, basically, which carries them multiple years, but the monies are upfront. And that is likewise another 350 grand nut. I'm not sure how that math ultimately will show up in the budget, but that's what he was talking about. And that doesn't even cover steps and lanes, salary, contract increases.
Did they finalize the teacher contract?
I don't know that.
I know they were
They hadn't, they were, that's right, they were closing in on it, but they couldn't tell me.
I bring this up just so the people who are watching can be ready and make themselves aware that there's some big numbers heading our way.
That's right. So outside of the guidance, and I'll play a little hardball. But also, I get what they're trying to do.
You know, I'm in no way saying it's, it's things they don't need. I'm just, I want the townspeople to be aware that these things are coming down the road.
That's right. That's right. But most other people have toe the line, if you will, on the guidance.
Okay.
With some needs identified that are a little bit outside the guidance. And so we'll see where it all falls out. And that's what you'll see next meeting.
Can't wait.
Yep.
Anything else? That's it?
Thank you.
Time to do some signatures, meeting minutes for February 3rd.
We're holding on?
No, we're holding 21st.
So I have a clean copy, do you want it? I didn't write anything because my handwriting is horrible, but do you want it?
Sign the back page.
Yeah.